Showman.
Slash pad.
Yes.
Right there, showman.
That's why Tomic says.
My lunch.
What's that?
I want my lunch.
Just in case.
No, sorry. Oh, I forgot my card.
Oh, yeah, okay, I guess. Yeah, last week, last month, I was wondering if we'd be here for dinner. Well, we always come off the wagon. Hey, Mark. This might be it.
We had eight thirty, then we had one.
Yeah. Wes Jackson's coming.
Jack is coming later.
Before your presentation, you have to say some workshopping. You can begin with a schedule.
The United States of America, if you're about to force a stand, one nation, under God, in the midst of war, liberty and justice for all.
Before you begin, please now call the order. The lines of emergency, right, long standing policy of the government, and if the lines feel above the being exact, I would should by that notice in this regular state meeting, sent to the editor of press, those old newspapers, January twenty twenty four. Defense is the date time of the issue of the speed or providing the notice. Speed is open to the public. Oral call. Tell somebody Beaver.
Here.
Headline.
Aaron.
Morgan.
Aaron.
Killer. Uh, Jackson, Lomia. John Crowe.
He said he wasn't going to build a wheelchair.
Okay, let's. Here. All right, first, for marks in the audience, does anybody online or in person who would like to meet birds, please state your name and address and floor of yours. Anybody here?
Hi, my name is Melissa Deanna. I'm working at ten ninety six Ocean Avenue, I'm just a little concerned, don't you know? I'm here because the parking in front of the store is super imperative to my business and just so people will pull over and park the thirty minute parking in front of the store. There's a sign for thirty minute parking, which you don't take down, but it's not enforceable. And I've been having a lot of issues with, especially, oop, because I have a church next door and the AA meetings meet multiple times a day and they park in front of the store. They don't like me asking them to park across the street. And I don't have the parking across the street because of the, of the Borough Hall and the police station and fire station. So that thirty minute parking right in front of the store is super critical. I have seen what a huge decline in business, especially this winter, just because I, the parking is, people park there all day, like, people who live above veins will park there all day and then people just don't pull over to stop. There, there's another search shop on the beach, they'll just go there. So I'm hoping if you guys consider changing the ordinance from, to, to all year. Right now, it's only enforceable from May through October. I need it, my business is, is all year, it's not seasonal business, I'm open, I'm open all year, so I really need help. Um, you know, I, I didn't know it wasn't enforceable over the wintertime. I called Capenarius the other day to help me out with some of, asked the AA people not to park there and said it wasn't enforceable. So I really need help because I can't keep asking them, they hate me now. Yeah.
You don't want to make that bad.
I know, I am.
I mean, Joe, is there any reason why we can't do that from a enforcement perspective? I mean, I understand why the main parking lot is not, uh, is, is not limited during, excuse me, is not limited during the course of the winter, when I disrupt business traffic. But like, who should have any traffic? I, I don't know why we would not have that in thirty minutes all year. And it's never been an issue before until, uh, this past weekend, right?
It's, it's been an issue, I just, I.
You just, I never.
Yeah, in previous years, I found out that I kind of got like, sick of being, uh, being planning, so, but it, and I, I need it, I need a fix.
If I could make a comment, about two years ago, we did a review of the parking in town. I went to every shop owner, if you're ready to speak to me, I think I may actually, to ask the shop owners' preference with regard to the thirty minute time. And the majority said they wanted to maintain the thirty minutes, if you guys remember, right, versus monkeying, because it drives turnover.
No, thirty minutes is good.
And when we did that, I reported back to the police department that we wanted to retain the thirty minutes, I know that's not going to be raised. So there's overwhelming support by merchants to keep it at thirty minutes, although a couple of them, like Allison and others, would like an hour or longer for people to sit down and breakfast, et cetera. I did not know that it was not enforceable in the off season, if you have a view. I understand your point perfectly, and I guess the question we should, what we should take out of this is an action as a council, to talk to the police department, to understand the effort, but we wouldn't make a decision here unless, but understand the concern, look at the pros and cons, and come back to you with a response.
We could start with just talking to the, the terms, right? And there, I mean, just a, a conversation with that.
Yeah, but if, if, I don't think it's just limited to the term.
I understand.
I think it's a full, full.
It's like, yeah, it's the main one of my.
But if I, if we could just start, start with a conversation.
Well, I mean, I think they just, I thought they achieved, well, one or two words about what was the matter. There's a reason for that, and then talk to the first two, basically, both, is there ever any issue with the off season parking in the main lot?
They know it's enforced, they know it's not being enforced.
Oh, that's okay, I, I understand, okay.
Yeah, so like, in the second time, everyone's scared to park there over thirty minutes, they know they're going to get a ticket, so I don't have to worry about it.
Sure.
But in the wintertime, it's, it's a problem, I guess, yeah.
Subtle, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions that you heard today? Morgan.
Being interested in center street. Since we're talking, can you come up closer so people can hear? Since we're talking about the E bike ordinance, I was just wondering how it would be if we asked people when they're building these new staircases or putting their decks on by the splash pad, to bump out that sidewalk. So we would have a, like, they have a long branches around to flow around the stairs. So if you put four feet of stairs, put four feet of curved sidewalk, so we could have the same width traffic, with bicycles and joggers, that choke wing getting hiced up all of those decks. You know, shoulder height, that's where, you know, the bicyclists, three bicycles come through there and two, two years walking.
That's, yeah, it does narrow their, I was actually talking with Frank like that, I mean, kind of a joke action, just pops out and it really narrows the lane, but I don't know how many people.
Well, you, you know, we've been talking about perhaps extending or widening the splash pad. We have a, right away, Frank's looking into, the Department of Transportation has a great program for bicycle safety. Uh, it may fit right into that, widen it, color it a certain color. Those are, those are options you folks are going to have in, in, you know, in the future.
And he's still a different old Murphy's suggestion, yeah.
I understand exactly what he's saying, though, he's right, it does, it does constrict when those stairs are built there.
As you know, E bike and the ordinance is on the agenda, I'll talk to that in the subject you just raised earlier.
Can we go back to the parking again on Ocean Avenue?
Sure.
My concern is that if we wait to the, if we wait to talk to the police and then come back, and, I mean, I'm not saying you can't talk to the police, but, um, an option should be included in this. But if we wait, that means we have a meeting on Tuesday, council meeting. So it wouldn't be introduced on Tuesday, the ordinance is changed, which means it wouldn't be introduced until April, which means it wouldn't be introduced until May, I mean, would be adopted until May, which means it's totally pointless for the rest of the year. So does it have, how, how difficult, yes, it does. So how difficult is it to speak with them before Tuesday, get a special ordinance on the agenda for Tuesday night? So at least most of the guests and the other businesses get the, uh, the benefit of it for the, for some of April. Or she'll speak in a sheet plan. Yeah, I just don't want, I'm moving enough because I don't want to wait until, make it until May, when it's adopted, which would then be, not over twenty twenty four. Now, we already covered that. Well, I don't know that you did, so I just want to make sure that that's clear, that's part of our receipt. So, okay. So Joe, if it's possible, we can get that on May, on the Tuesday agenda for adoption, if the police are happy to.
If you goes, if you folks are in favor, we could talk to the police, talk to them about enforcement and, uh, I, I, I guess it's a simple ordinance, I haven't read the ordinance, but like.
It just simply, it's a chart, and it simply says, uh, it lists everything and everything is on May through, uh, May through October.
I mean, it's inappropriate to make a decision right now.
I'm not asking to make a decision right now.
I know, but we already had it planned. What I'm suggesting with the mayor's station now was, you see the ball from the police department.
Right.
As quickly as possible.
Yeah.
Get a perspective on that.
I was going to wait until October, I was going to wait till the fall.
Yeah.
But thank you, Claire. Again, it wasn't clear that you were going to do this for, for Tuesday night, all right? So that's why I'm making it up, because I didn't want to fall, I just thought, okay, we don't have a calendar in front of us. Okay. Wanted to make sure everybody had the right perspective, that it doesn't make sense to wait until April to produce it. That's it. All right. Any others that you heard today? Anybody online that you heard today? All right, let's move on to our first resolution, uh, resolution number sixty one twenty twenty four, authorized an area of, or administrative area, and they might take a motion about the resolution number. I, I have a question. The, uh, the agreement that was forwarded to us in draft, is that the agreement that we're moving right now?
Correct.
There was no commencement date on that. And I know we had talked about the fact that.
It's two months ago.
It's inside of the agreement, I was, I did not see it.
It was, uh, I had it over, it was no later than, um, May thirteenth, Monday, May thirteenth.
That's what we discussed, but I didn't.
That was our, that was our agreement, and it was agreed to by, uh, by Rachel.
But it's not in the agreement.
Uh.
I mean, if it's in there and I missed it, I apologize, I did not see it from that.
Let me take a quick, quick look. You think that you will come?
I, I don't think that's going to be a problem, but I know that was a concern of everyone's, that we wanted to make sure that commencement is served a date. Hey, you had writing an email.
I did, no later than, uh. Yeah, it doesn't say when it starts.
Uh, can we add that line, which, I mean, I'll, I'll move it if we add that line, if we want it to met, send it.
She needs that requirement, we want to discuss that, but I didn't see that.
No, I, I don't think, I, I think she's very comfortable with May thirteenth, her and I discussed it face to face, May thirteenth is fine.
So if we can have a commencing, no, no.
No later than.
Later than May thirteenth, then I'll, I'll move the, uh, I'll move the resolution with that amendment.
So before, before a second, as chair of the personal committee, I just want to extend a thank you, Joe. Joe, you did an outstanding job of getting the slate candidates in front of us, working through the process in a timely way, dealing with the ability of the whole council to review the candidates very effectively, getting to a conclusion.
Thank you.
So on seconding the motion, I want to thank you for what you did.
Thank you. I think you're being left in good hands.
Yeah, Chris, I guess you just, yes, in house seven.
Oh.
So, Bernie, second. I did roll all the, tell somebody Beaver.
Yes.
Headline.
Yeah.
Morgan.
Yes.
Killer.
I'm saying, I didn't hear enough.
The board administrator. We're disvoting over, I'm ranked.
Firm, yes.
All right, and let's see. Yes. All right, we have adopted the resolution number sixty one twenty twenty four, about the Rachel. Uh, we can move on to items for discussion, first was Joe, there are a couple of questions update.
Um, just a couple of brief comments, uh, we, uh, wanted, want to welcome Rachel. Uh, I think it's going to be a great, uh, fit for Seabright and for Rachel. And I'm looking forward to the transition. As far as capital, uh, next week, you will be voting on the bond issue for both, uh, uh, engineering proposals for, um, the relining of the Ocean Avenue, uh, storm sewer, uh, sanitary sewer. And, um, those projects are going to start moving forward, and I'm hopeful to have the one for the public works building for you at the next meeting. So those two are big for the summer, they're, they're big pieces of a capital program. Uh, and as you can see from outside, all of our equipment's out in the weather right now. Uh, we have no place to put it, and I would, uh, hope we can expedite it, I don't know what your frame, timeframe is, Ray, but, um, it's going to take a little while to. Do the engineering and then ultimately out to bid.
Any. What other time is, is critical?
This year, twenty four?
Absolutely, it'll be close, it'll probably end of the year, beginning of the year, be followed now.
So, so, so those are very important to us, you know, our equipment's out in the elements right now. Uh, I think we have some good news on some of the, when police give a report, but, uh, on, on our, on our dealings with, uh, the Den Holtz project, but, uh, they're going to start to have those buildings down now. That's all I have.
I agree. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to a public standing, of course, updates.
Hey, good morning, everybody. Good morning. Last month, we had two hundred and seventy call for services, a little bit of everything.
Could you come over closer?
Some of the stuff the past month, I know I went out to fry it, I was going to have a break, had to enter speech, too, we'll look at there. There's not going to be a problem with the police getting any kind of access out there, we have the whole thing squared away, no chat out there, new wall, we, she went to every single spot, there's not going to be any kind of issue of us getting any police equipment or anything over any part of the wall. We got it, we've done it before, will it be a little tricky up there, absolutely, but we'll make it happen, so that will not be an issue. There were a few code enforcement violations that we took care of, so some issues, some warnings given, mostly applied to CP zone. Um, I know we talked about the E bike ordinance with, um, some of the council members, which is fine. Jim McHugh has been looking at every single door, this place, trying to figure out this whole system, definitely had some problems with it. Most importantly, one o'clock this afternoon, I have a meeting with Den Holtz out on the Church Street lot, about using it for the summertime, we need that lot, so hopefully it will go well, I will, soon the meeting is done, I'll call Joe and Brian and give you the updates, so. That's what I have for right now.
Any questions? Well, thanks for kind of working with the department, we need that. Yeah, we need that, that's what we're here, though. Yeah. Thanks, Joe. Any questions for Dave?
Hey. Good morning. Twenty eight calls on, uh, February, it's up to twenty two calls in February of twenty twenty three, which is two one zero eight for the year. We finished our annual refreshers requirement to continue our membership here, you have to go through your refresher. Uh, we re-certified sixty two guys, we took ten excuses, usually it's military, it's school, we will make them when they come back in the day. Um, I don't know if you guys saw, we rewarded that grant, um, from the DCA, seventy thousand dollars, which is, um, fifteen cents a year. Uh, I spoke with Mr. Vass, yesterday, um, that is a reimbursement program. So we're just waiting on the official, um, award letter from state. Um, if he can get that either today or tomorrow, which we're going to follow as soon as I leave here, um, hold make arrangements in budget for the reimbursement, and we'll try to get a resolution prepared for Tuesday. So like I said, I'm a call, we know people at the DCX, and we see if we can get that award on our dash rack, I thought we got to push it to next month, which I'd rather not do.
Chief, just a question on that.
Yep.
Was the actual prior acquisition before the reimbursement more than fifteen pieces of equipment?
That was the application.
But will we buy any more that that offsets the portion?
No.
Okay, so there's not, when you talk about adjustment of budget, right, and you were already planning on buying stuff.
No, no, there, there wasn't a lot for, for turn up your, I'm sure.
Okay, so is, is all of the new equipment being procured this year, if it intersects new equipment, you can pay for that right now?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That costs seventy thousand.
Very good.
No, that's, this is the American Rescue Program, the DCA grant. The engine is out for its refurbishment, uh, the tunnel will be backed by Benning, which is fine, as long as I get it back.
May?
May, yep. As long as it's back before summer season, I can, I can make do with that, but. I don't know if you guys noticed that five tunnel was painted outside, the truck that we bought from deal for a dollar. One of our guys is on a, wrote a painting, uh, he went and painted it himself, it's a different color, red, I know that, it was free. His boss donated the material, and he did the work for it. We got to paint the hood, the, the white hood's not working, there's a lot of clay, so we're going to paint that hood, uh, to match the, the rest of the truck. Well, Chris just brought up the assistance firefighter grant, um, again, I spoke with Mr. Vass, about this grant, this grant program, we, we apply for every year, we've been successful a few times. It's a FEMA grant, um, five percent shared cost. This year, we're going to ask for eight new straddle defenders, because we need them, the ones that we have now are twelve years old, um, and three of their packs. Uh, it was a cost of forty two thousand? Yeah, forty two thousand, five percent shared cost, my group's okay with it, um, so I'm currently in the process of preparing that, there should be a resolution for Tuesday night for, uh, just for the program. So our five percent is two K.
Yeah.
That's it.
All together. Thank you. That's it.
Ed?
Yeah. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, man. Year to date, we've had twenty eight calls, we have one missed call, we had to go to mutual aid for. Apparently, there was no one around at all, me, the fire, all the first day, and thanks to the fire department here for helping us answer our calls. One of the, the five of the calls were Sandy Hook, one was a cardiac arrest, we got to use our new Lucas, and she.
Oh, really?
And it worked great. We have four applications out, the members, two of the members are in driver training, and we have, one member has become an A M T, and the other one's waiting to take his test. Uh, blood drive is May fourteenth, from one to seven P M.
That is old Borough.
Yeah, old Borough Hall. And that's basically it.
What was the time limit on the blood drive?
Uh, one, one to seven. We're going to have signs up in Townsend.
Hey, Greg.
Thanks, Neil.
Please, sir. All right. Oh, hey, Angel. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, everybody. Okay, so, um, public work started, working on the dune fencing in North Beach from Sandy Hook down to Shippensburg. We still have some issues with the openings because our list, like Gray Davis, differs a little bit from Frank's, so we're trying to get it past that. So, anyway, that part of it's done. South Beach, we did along the Village and Trayvon's Lane, that's. And as far as going from the last, the Driftwood Beach Club down to the Mama's Water, we're not allowed to put the fence up there. Frank, it was a contact with Christina Davis, and she said no. Officially, not like. And in addition to that, she said they need thirty days notice for any fence we put up in those restricted areas.
So that's for it to, to the Mama Beach?
Yeah.
And he, so he, he has absolutely said no to that?
Absolutely, that's.
Well, they said no to putting it in front of the, the, the current dune. Uh, behind the dunes, you're able to do it, correct?
Yeah, but there's a lot of sand back there.
No, I.
I mean, if you want to, you can put it up. Hey, that's, I'm sorry, is that coming, that's coming from Frank or, or that's coming, you heard from the E P directly?
Frank, Frank talked to Christina Davis.
He did, okay.
Fishing Wildly. We ran into that problem in North Beach a few years ago, that we put it in front of the dunes and they made us remove it.
Like, almost immediately?
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, we put it behind the dunes in South Beach. So why doing it behind the dunes, South of Driftwood, is that different than?
It's a protected area.
But you said we can do it behind the dunes. Right, Dave started with, we can't do it there. What he meant to say was, he can't do it in front of the dunes, and he said, doing it behind the dunes doesn't make a lot of sense. He did it behind the dunes in South Beach, at Village and Trayvon's.
I think he had more room there, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, uh, the dune pretty much comes right up to the seawall in South Beach, from Driftwood to Mama Beach.
So there is no gap.
There's no access point.
Not really of access.
To the dune. So there's really no place that you can put fence that'll help the situation down there.
Okay, that, that clarifies that question.
Yeah, and there's a fence there already, but it's, you know, not totally together.
Just a, just a quick question, um, if sand collects right up against the seawall, if it does, does that create a risk in the case of a heavy storm, because of its ability to get up over the seawall compared to being broken by the rocks? Because what we're doing, and I, I agree with what we're doing, but what we're doing is accumulating a lot of sand, and hopefully, at the rocks. And imagine if the sand covered the rocks, the ocean just could ride over, came out, so it's, Greg, I'm on B, I'm asking you, is, is there a question here?
No, no, because if you think about the, the ocean has to be at a certain elevation to get over the seawall, so the fact that you smoke in front of it's going to make a very difference.
Even if it's wave action?
What will happen is, we would get the Mama of, Mama Beach effect, where the.
Sand blows over onto the road.
Exactly, I mean, that's.
That's the worst problem.
That's coming around the corner for us.
I, I, I agree with everything we're doing, we're trying to capture an old sand, I get it, I just want to make sure we're not creating another problem in the process.
Well, years ago, in twenty thirteen, after Superstorm Sandy, we hired an excavator and equipment, and pulled all that sand off of the wall, from one end of the town, pretty much to the other. And we had, we had bulldozers, but you can't, Christine Davis would never let us do that today.
If there's a fence there already, dude.
Yeah.
Is that, that is superior.
Yeah.
I mean, can't we talk to Christina Davis and say, hey, if the fence is there already, you just want to replace it and come?
She may allow, so, that wasn't the question we asked.
I understand, but that might be something to look at.
We'll, we'll take, we'll talk to her, I mean, now she's around more often, it's, um, you know, it's, it's right around the corner that the season starts, the fifteenth, so, uh, she'll be here.
So it's a bit confusing, because if the fence that we have, the superiority is behind the dune.
Yeah.
We have the authority to put a new fence behind the dune, just not in front.
Yeah, but I wasn't told that, I was told to put it in front of the dune.
No, I didn't, I get that. The request that came from the town to put it in front, E P position is, you cannot do that, not permitted.
That's all right, basically, I'm going to go back and talk to.
Good point.
Last question was, so if the superiority fence behind the dune, we have authority to replace, should we replace?
As long as we got the permission to do it, we'll do it.
We, we'll, I agree with you, I agree there, we.
It's, we didn't answer that question.
Got it.
One question, man, from fifty foot south, is New Beach, so, you don't have a real problem there, except for all the sand.
Right. Well, it's, it seems to be gathering, uh, on the inside of the seawall there, it's like, kind of filled in somewhat, it's not like North Beach where we have the access road on the east side of the, the jetty or seawall.
Joe, I know, I, Sam, you're on the phone?
Yeah, um.
Yeah, I mean, you, you receive calls, have you about that area, when people want the fence, because there are problems?
Correct. Yeah, the problem is, uh, the calls, um, that people are calling now is that the fence that was left, um, fell down, uh, is still there, it was never removed, and then the new fence was put up, uh, like, right behind it. So now we have a problem with the, uh, residents, uh, complaining that the fence is down on the ground, it's left there, and then new ones up, it's, it shrunk the a- access road down in some spots.
Isn't that, is that in North Beach, Sam?
Yes.
What about South Beach?
South Beach, I got reports that we, uh, put some fence across access points that possibly should not have been, uh, fenced off.
But that's at the village, right?
Uh, I believe the Village situation was, um, addressed by Greg and, and Brian, they went down and checked it out, so I, I don't know if there's a problem there anymore, um, because it's open. As far as other spots, I don't know if there's, uh, accesses that are fenced off.
Hey, hey, Joe, just another question, so with all the work of D W and others, putting, putting the fence in it, we know there are cases where people are knocking down and walking over the fence, which is a detriment to everybody. And I understand why people want to do it, but my question was, in light of the fact that you have not permitted to go through in that section, you invested in the fencing, should we enforce that somehow?
It's, it's hard to enforce, I mean, we know that, uh.
And you have to catch the building.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, it, it's not a rocket science, you know, if there's a, if there's a stairway there, that you may, you may want to talk to the person that owns the stairway.
In the high speed section, yeah, it's easier to catch.
I mean, we can't watch them do it, I don't know, who do you look to, the police, I mean, they are kicking them down.
You could probably see whose house it's from, but it issues some, you kind of have to see and do it. You have to see and do it, it'll be done night time, morning, and all the neighbors probably have one access, and they all probably go to the same spot. So it's probably just one house, probably kind of using that access, just catching them is definitely challenging.
Well, we know that everyone that builds a crossover wants to be able to walk straight to the beach, but it, it's, it's not very onerous to walk fifty yards one way or the other, but.
Yeah, I mean, I.
So I don't know how we enforce it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know.
We can talk to them.
I just don't know how you have somebody doing that, because it's, you know, public.
Yeah. I understand.
That's, that is, though. I agree with you, you're right, we do it, though.
Are we done with that issue now? All right, moving along, um, so, we are working on the beach lockers. All right, moving along. So we are working on the beach lockers currently. Need a lot of maintenance. Uh, D E W is working on that as we speak. Frank Lash and I, myself, went out to look at a couple of bulkheads at the west end of Peninsula Avenue and Southway. Is there deteriorating spots there, especially on Peninsula? It seems to be a private property issue.
It is, and it's in bad shape.
It's affecting our sidewalk underneath. That bulkhead has to get fixed before we can really do anything. As far as the one in North Beach, it looks like it's gonna have to be excavated.
How far, Greg, do you think that's...
It's actually eroded on the industry at the bulkhead, the sidewalk in the east of the bulkhead. Mostly caused by, what we could see was mostly caused by the fact that the resident on the south side put his bulkhead. He didn't seal off between our bulkhead and the road. So we got, it's just a matter of a simple thing to do. You put a block of concrete there to stop the erosion of that seam. And it wasn't done.
There is, there's no ordinance covering anything. I didn't put a bulkhead ordinance years ago. There's a, yeah, they really didn't get it in some way.
Is that included, you know, in the ordinance?
I have this specific, I'm sure it probably was, just to make an intersection between the existing block.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just a normal standard procedure practice.
I would think, yeah.
It's about fourteen, Southway. It's the last house on the way.
So Greg, this is a case, we have a bulkhead near the street that's put up in town. Property owner put one in the gap between, and it's flooding that?
Oh, there's, there's really no gap. They, they flooded up to it, but there's a seam.
There's a seam.
It wasn't closed. It might, you know, the bulkhead is a seam, right? So it's a matter of pouring a lot of concrete to seal that, so you don't have the edges that, like, erode through that seam. And that's what's happened over the years. It just eroded a lot of there.
Okay. Do, do we think this is the only location that that situation exists?
No, I'm sure there's plenty of...
But it's the ones we're most aware because of the damage it's caused.
Yeah, there's a huge sinkhole there.
And the homeowners call. That's what's very so often to get it up there.
I mean, the interesting thing is, when the whole one I put in the bulkhead, it was best interest of the private debt. It didn't, did not manage to do the government, we never knew.
Yeah, that's probably a part of, private claims, everything. If those bulkhead, they gotta include that.
Yeah, we'll take a look at the bulkhead ordinance. Maybe there's something that we can tie to.
Can we also look at that bulkhead on Peninsula Way? Cause we have an email from a resident saying there were kids playing over there. It was incredibly dangerous. So what's the action on that one?
That was the Peninsula?
Yeah.
Yeah, Peninsula.
Peninsula Avenue, yeah, we already brought that up.
Yeah, we looked at it.
I know. What's the action on that? Because that seems to be a public safety issue with, you know, people playing on the street, especially when the summer comes through. Everyone starts fishing down there. It's gonna become, I mean, it already is dangerous. So what is the next action step there?
The problem with that is that the eroded bulkhead is not ours. It's private.
I know.
So the only thing we could do is request the property owner or us to put up a fence to isolate that property, because that is deteriorating about probably fifteen to twenty feet is in very poor shape and below the water level. And it's causing a tremendous seep hole underneath our road and our sidewalk.
Right.
Something has to be done relatively similar with the inner road.
Okay, Heather, I think you're asking a very good question. Since I'm meeting a bulkhead activity, I'll take a look at it. I'll meet with Greg and then go recommend the issue on access.
I really need the ball.
Yeah, good point.
Third contract, usually you put a vertical...
Tieback.
Tieback, ten feet, fifteen feet.
Generally, what happens when there's existing, there, which is what happened when we put the, our, at our right, we put a bulkhead. There was an existing bulkhead here, so that was capped off, like the top of it was a lot of concrete. Usually, you don't need a tieback. You lose an existing bulkhead there. But the problem is that it's a steel bulkhead. It's only eroded for about twenty foot second. It is shorter and longer to fix that.
Right. It's like a rod to...
Our, our, if they, if the company doesn't do, involve the whip there, if we don't put some kind of stopping in there with some concrete or something, we would have to put a tieback piece of sheet piling ourselves just to keep, protect the road.
Tiebacks, you're a good idea.
Well, the problem with doing that, then, they're, they're gonna lose their obvious property. It's gonna, eventually, that, that erosion will just continue to swirl and it's gonna just, we would have to come all the way down the street as the erosion all continued. So it's everybody's best interest to get this property owner to fix that bulkhead. Because it's, even if we fix our piece, it's gonna erode further than it's been instead of the first one.
It's just gonna keep eating away at it.
And we do get that property owner approval to have parking in the sun. You know, kind of inviting people there.
That's an interesting point.
Okay, you know, we have this leak up here. I'm trying to get this last quote in, but soon that's gonna be fixed. It appears to be a wall leak in the seams of the material up there and it's not the windows itself, so...
Okay.
As soon as I get a last quote in, probably looking at around three thousand dollars at least. We took care of the flower pots, we might send you the email, so we're just waiting to hear from whoever's wearing one and drop them off. And Frank's gonna get some painter to paint the holders.
All right, I can speak to it.
For the land. Well, it's no rush whenever we get a chance, because they have to paint them anyway, so...
I have data. Just a second.
Okay. I know Brett said he can get around, access around that Anchorage Beach, but we really can't bring the beach rate and tractor and front end loader through that. It's a real problem for us, so...
Where you don't have the back to let?
Yeah, well, where the jetty's exposed now. That roadway, it's gone. That's what we used to use to get the heavy equipment out there. So, right?
I spoke with, um, um, the...
Correct.
They will, you know, that picket, that chain link fence they have?
Yeah.
It's almost all buried.
It's almost all buried, yeah.
They're opening that up in this kind of section.
Okay.
It's a four feet, it's a...
Okay, I didn't know that. That's great that I can do that, because we gotta get the front end loader to get probably a couple dozen lockers up there, too. And then rake it out on a regular schedule.
They said, um, if I know...
Okay, so I can contact him?
Yeah.
Hold on.
Yeah, Mr. Keel, what I would recommend there is that I ever can take that out, because that's pretty well buried. That's like buried six to seven feet. I recommend, it's only exposed about six inches. And I talked to the chief about this. Let's just put a little sand over the top. Even though we're riding over the dune, if we take that fence out, it's gonna destroy that next twenty feet dune. And that's right where the erosion is pinched in on the south side, the north side of the jetty, Anchorage. And it'll just make that exposed. They're making susceptible a tremendous erosion in that water.
So it's having like a bulkhead now?
Well, it's, it's solidified there, so you don't really wanna disturb it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
If the tide gets up to that point, it'll all be gone instantly.
You said, uh, you said we can do that. It's just, it's gonna require quite a amount of sand.
Oh, the chief and I talked. It wasn't necessarily the end section. It was like, I think, the second section, oh, maybe ten feet from the end of the fence. The fence is almost totally submerged in the sand. And that's where I recommend we go. It's not gonna be, you know, something that D E P appreciates from a maintenance point, but from an emergency point of view, it's not a problem.
Okay, you gotta do it, right?
Right, we're gonna destroy part of the dune, but if we take that fence out, we're gonna lose the dune.
Well, that's, you're talking, but the issue, Sam, is the heavy equipment will correct for a little sand to put on top, so it has to be a considerable amount of sand.
Uh, but I reckon I think it's only about six inches, just to get over, just because we don't wanna ruin tires, the machine, but not a lot of sand or ruin plants.
Well, the issue, Sam, is then the heavy equipment is gonna ruin the fence.
Not, it, it shouldn't, because it's buried. I mean, that, that fence is, you know, probably buried sixteen.
Talking about a fourteen.
Yeah. But we'll, we'll make sure it doesn't do that.
So is that, is that fence part of the commission, sort of?
Yeah, that's his fence.
Right, so I guess if we, we were destroyed, we certainly replace it.
Yeah, but we can also put mats over the top, just so it doesn't...
We don't wanna destroy our equipment there.
Sure, we would have to protect the tires and the equipment anyway.
We own that all, yeah.
Yeah.
That's not, uh, D E P, that's...
Right.
I'll, uh, I'll give you, I'll give you some...
Yeah, okay, you don't, I'll, I'll...
Third quarter. Third quarter.
Yeah, he's a good guy, so... Okay, moving forward. We have issues with personnel. Unfortunately, we lost two one week after Randy retired. Jose left to go to another job, part of Florida, Jersey Transit. I think, can't blame the guy. It was a better opportunity for him. Wish him well. So there's only four of them now, so we definitely need to get out of there.
Yeah, you're advertising for summer, true?
Yeah, that should be going in today's paper, right, then, or on the website. But we still need to replace Randy, a full-time employee. We were told six months ago that was gonna happen. And now, it seems to be on hold, you told me.
Well, I don't know if it's on hold. There are, the council's on the discussion. We'll, we'll, we'll further discuss that. You ought to be ready to, uh, put an ad in. I don't know that you have an ad ready, but council will consider, you know, consider the additional hiring, but, so you ought to be ready to go.
Least amount of people I've had since I first got hired, almost twenty or three years ago. So there's a lot more to do now.
Hey, just so we're clear, I agree with what Joe just said, yeah. We say go, we're ready to go without an ad for a full time?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're ready to go?
Yeah.
From summer help, how many people will be bringing on board?
Well, we'd like to get, what, Rob and Batu right now, for the summers?
Two would be nice for now, but...
Yeah, but then you're gonna need a lot more. It's the summer season.
So just real quickly, what, what is your plan? You want two part-timers now and how many want the summer?
Usually, sea, part-time seasonal is pretty much the same. So Jose was, started out as a seasonal.
I'm just looking for a number. How many people do you wanna bring on board besides the full-time person for the summer?
For the summer? Additional four, we agree.
Four is what you're gonna request? Okay. And you, and you have an ad going out for that now?
Yes, yes.
Just wanna make sure that we're all clear on what...
It actually may be four once we get into the full swing of the summer, you know, because there's a lot of garbage we gotta take in, so...
Okay.
And buy clean.
Do full-time, four part-time?
No, one, one more full-time and two seasonal for right now. And then as the season gets ramped up, we'll be looking to hire more seasonal workers. But they kinda come and go with the summer.
So it's not one, two, and four, or one, two, and two?
One, two, and two.
Okay, one, two, and two, okay.
Two, two as soon as possible.
Yeah.
And then two coming on for the summer. And his request is for, to replace Randy, uh, as the full-time employee.
Okay. And obviously, John has involved in the D E W. He's not here right now. So we'll take this action, talk about it, and then finally say...
But we're moving forward with part-timers.
He's the one, that one, right? He's the one who told us that you guys weren't sure that you were gonna hire him.
Okay.
And that's what it's all about.
Got it.
All right, so let's... Also, we're gonna need that new Kubota for the beach. It was on the, the capital approval.
Did you talk to Donna?
No. We're, we're the ones who put in for it.
It just comes, it comes under beach?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think Donna would fight us on it. He wants to know what the arguments like that.
So, so...
We really have no way to get it off right now.
We really, we really have to talk to Mike Bascom and find out what the final...
Right.
...result was from the budget hearings where people were requesting capital programs, so I'll take that on. I'll talk to Mike.
It's really imperative, because we're gonna have to get it and get it here for the season. The one will dump on the back and you can hold a lot more of the markets, you know?
Okay.
The one we have now, it's gonna cost like thirteen to repair and a new one would be twenty-five, so it's figuring wear and tear.
One, two, three, four.
Yeah, or, how do they say that? Pannealized and pound foolish or something like that.
Is there a...
I'll, I'll handle that.
It's really imperative that we get it.
Since, you know, this equipment rarely rail, was a...
That's what we gotta find out. We can find out that on our end, but we need the funding on your end, for permission.
But if they're six months ago, they're ruined, then I think it...
We'll, we'll be going somewhere else then. We can't wait six months.
Okay, and you buried the old one, you buried the old one?
For thirteen thousand dollars, if it comes down to that.
Well, I think what Jack said is, is if you can't get one...
Yeah.
We'll have a...
We will, we'll, we'll figure that out, Jack, because... We'll figure that out.
We're not ready to see it.
Oh, yeah.
We prefer to, prefer to whatever they, the order they... All right, so...
Thank you. Appreciate that. And the last thing is, we have a leak in a San Terris sewer main up by the middle pump station. So what I did to try to save money, I talked to Mike down there at, uh, Two Rivers, order reclamation. He sent the collections crew out there. They jetted a line between the manhole between that and the pump station there, running speed. And televised it. It was inconclusive. They think it's further upstream, so... They had other work to do that day, so it was nice of them to kinda do that for us for nothing. I had to monopolize on it, so I'm gonna have to hire somebody else to, to continue the job, to find out where the leak is and then we gotta figure out how I'm gonna fix it. Because we're paying for it on the backend once it goes through that meter.
Would you fix that with a steamer or something like that?
It depends on what we found.
Okay.
They, they did put the camera up, going upstream around forty-one feet. They said he saw a piece of concrete or something like that. So, anyway, I'm, I'm trying to get the whole quotes, so we're doing it the right way.
Okay, where was that again?
It's across from six forty Ocean Avenue, where the pump station is. Now, we went around half the manholes from, for the whole south, uh, Basin Number Two, and we couldn't find it, so we just don't know where it is. Really need to tantalize it at this point to find it and fix it to get it under control. Because like I said, we're paying for it on the backend, so it's not gonna, it's a problem that's not gonna go away. Then you got all the wear and tear on the pumps and everything else.
Sure.
So I'm working on that. As soon as I get to third quote, I'm gonna move forward on that. Any questions, anybody?
You did receive the third bid on, uh, the municipal complex to fix the soffit and...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot that.
That's okay. And repaint the, the other items. We're moving forward on that.
Yes. They're, they're gonna take care of the I-beams. They gotta be scraped, primed, painted, and They're, they're gonna take care of the I-beams. They gotta be scraped, primed, painted, and then there's gonna be some type of a.
Towing bill.
And replace the soffits that are missing and I guess they're gonna skewer the ones, you know, as they go around.
I think it got worse after these winds this weekend.
And then they're gonna put ice shields in the front part of it, because remember we had that, something fell down a couple of years ago and shattered the glass on me. So, ice is very dangerous, especially when it starts moving at that speed.
Hey Dave, I had one question before we, uh, I just wanna confirm. So the plan is at Anchorage to put sand on top of that chain link fence? So you guys did get the equipment through that area?
Yeah, we have no way to get it through right now, sand.
Okay, so, so that will get you through that one, but at Shipahoy, we got the exact same issue at that Jenny North.
Yeah.
Um, even if you get through Anchorage, how would you get the equipment through Shipahoy, um, get?
I'm not for sure on that one yet.
I know Greg went down there and checked that out. Greg, you, we'll get that from the.
Yeah, we're probably gonna have to ship away beach. We're gonna have to talk to the beach club owner and see if we can, if the situation doesn't improve, we would have to talk about taking second his fence down for us to get through. That's about the advice we give to Shipahoy.
I don't know if they'll do that, but I agree with you. There's really not much choice there.
We have to talk. But the ones for Anchorage, I mean, we're gonna look at, I think we put some manning over the top of that. We're gonna have to do that a case by case basis. Emergency, I say you go over what you have to go over, but from an access point of view for me, we're gonna have to look at some kind of manning with that to do.
Yeah, but you're a hundred percent right because we have to get to that service room there and empty the garbage can that are public access points.
Joe, before we go to the section before we're asked to depart, just to quick up the, what we're doing, what's the status of the D O T checkouts? I mean, that's so critical to ocean area capacity.
The D O T right now is redesigning that out there. They're gonna put the two pile vents in.
Yeah.
And bury that out in the water. They're designing their, going through the process with the D E P permit. Once they are comfortable with their design and permitting, they're gonna come back with us, show us the design, and then we're gonna show it to the homeowner and say, this is your last bike, the animal, and this is the last, the, the, the N D O T are both kinda saying, this is where, you know, we gotta not keep going on surface here.
Based on the discussion that happened, do you believe we have a solution?
I believe this is the only solution.
And including the homeowner being okay with it?
Well, he, he, at the time we were there, he said he was okay with it, but every time we, once you set the limit, then you have to push the element. But we kinda told him, we can't leave it the way it is. The beach is gonna grow. And we have to get that into the water, which is pile vents, we told them, look at southward, which is where we get there, and responding, keep then extending it out, keep the sand from climbing the pipe, plus we're gonna pluck. And then the, the D O T agreed to put the checkout at the end of the pipe, so that the pipe doesn't fill up with sand. So if this is the best, then final design come through.
So we all know the wall five checkout to head up because of this one. The D E P won't, and then the rest of the south, and then we do wall five.
Yes.
Checkouts exist, have been procured. So this is the last, hopefully the last one we got. If everything goes to plan, what means the D O T would possibly be repairing these checkouts?
I would probably say the fall, fall year list.
Fall year list, okay. We, we just gotta keep on this, and I know you are, because this affects people in North Beach and South Beach so much with the ability to come right onto the island.
I think the last storm, I'm told, for the police, the north and south beach were the worst.
Uh, downtown.
Downtown worked okay, but north beach and south beach were a mess during that.
Okay, so you're, you're comfortable, Greg. We've got it in the box. You have to keep working it, and hopefully a solution the homeowner is acceptable with. And then maybe as, as early as the fall, fall.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes. Greg, Greg, they're aware of it. They're gonna go back out. He was gonna talk to public works about the Anchorage fence that is getting eaten on down.
Yeah, I'm gonna talk to Rob about it. I'm gonna move that one section over. It's just, it's a road underneath it. We're gonna keep it on and keep moving that to the west as that corner keeps eroding.
Yeah.
That is the worst part of erosion is the north side of that anchor jet.
No, right down.
Yeah, the one that's damaged. So we'll get that, the fence is actually all exposed though.
I hate to say, but Greg has to leave and the next one is on Greg.
I just have one.
We're setting up.
So we're, we're gonna set up for Don for his straight. Make sure the beach is good.
We're gonna get back here.
So it's safe for everybody to have access to it.
What did it say?
The twenty-third.
Yeah, we have twenty-third.
I think.
Yeah.
That's everything there.
And then for the, for the Easter conference also dropping behind this nine for the playgrounds. So you have the playground already.
Heather, did you say the Easter conference is May twenty-third?
March.
March.
March, August, or March.
It's early this year, Brian.
I just. Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, so more of us memorialize them.
Exactly. So, oh, sorry. Official one, the next one is of the, uh.
Number three.
Yes, the new stormwater control. It's like a state required, you wanna speak it up for your head.
Yeah. The state came up with the regulations for shore communities. They want, and you've developed into use, they call it resiliency thing, where they, you know, they're coming to use the best available information under the new storm information that's out there. So it's gonna be kind of a floating design. The general D E P can update the set numbers you have to design for. So say that one community is flooding worse than others, you have to use that critical information you're finding from, you know, it's sort of the sea level rise, all sorts of information. So it's not really a set strongly. You gotta kinda be the best information available as a company, the design we develop. We don't really have a lot of that going on. One of the last pieces of progress has been design approved. But anything new we really don't have a major development, I'm holding unless there's somebody knocking on the piece of copper. But that's what it, that's all about. It's the new resiliency to try to help the shore communities deal with it.
We have it. Do we have the ordinance done?
Yeah, there was a draft part, as I said, Chris, which is, we'll finalize that.
I think you have appendix D.
You have appendix D, you have a model.
We kinda replace the, the word sea level, you know, for D E P.
Yeah. Greg, before you go, we have two ordinances also, the salt, the salt regulation, or the salt storage regulations and the tree preservation. I, I remember talking about the tree preservation, but is the salt one also a D E P thing?
Yes.
It is. Okay.
Yeah, the salt one was pretty easy and straightforward. We kinda finished that one. That's just really, doesn't deal directly with us since we have to regulate people who might put it in parking lots, like a shopping center, piles of.
We have a lot of those.
Salt in, like a beach, a pile of salt. They have to cover it, that's why.
Okay, no problem. That's it.
Should we be introducing this ordinance on Tuesday?
The stormwater?
Yeah.
No, I would say we do it. We'll go one more, one more workshop with it and then we'll introduce that for that. Heather, if you want me, yeah, cause I got a lead recently, I don't know if I can skip the seven real quick, the jones out.
Yeah, get a time to do that.
Yeah, sure. I'd rather it's not leaving it.
Alright, so we're on a beach, new fences, beach jackets, we touched on it a little bit. Lots of work in progress here. There's some good progress up.
Yeah. The fence is collecting sand.
Hey Greg, I'm sorry. Would you mind sitting here just so the people online can.
Yeah, we put the fence in Anchorage. It seemed to be working very well. It's collecting sand both sides, which is kinda what the fence is intended to do. But mostly, we put it up for beach safety. And this morning I looked at it. It looks like some of the sand came back. The actual drop off is gone. The biggest problem we have there is this, the south end of the beach near the Jenny, that corner's eroding very badly and it's, it's extended on either the, the fence that we put in on the east side. So that walkway's gonna slowly narrow down because we don't wanna keep pushing it over the top of the dune. And it depends how much the erosion goes there. I'll have to talk about how we're gonna get through there in the future. I mean, I talked to the chief about it. For emergency purposes, we have an app, right? We kinda target a spot where we go over that fence where it's not exposed very much. And for maintenance, we're gonna have to kinda get into how we get across it, because the D E P isn't gonna appreciate us regularly driving across the top of that dune. For emergencies, I'm sure they're not gonna give us any problem, because everybody realizes what the situation is, I'm sure. But yeah, the fence seems to be working great. Shipahoy wasn't as bad with the, the erosion there, so I don't know if you really need a fence there. It was only like about an eighteen inch drop at the worst, most it was like a foot. But like I said, the, the drop is going from Anchorage current, except for the south.
No, thanks, man. Everybody's had a hand in this. Everybody's been concerned. It was pretty bad, I think, you know, big picture though right now, like one of the considerations was adding, you're saying out loud, like adding sand, which is incorrect right now. We don't discuss it. It'd be great if we could do a self replenishment of what's not realistic.
Yeah, if you can guarantee that it wouldn't erode, it would be great, but I, people are saying they're.
Funny for it, yeah.
It were just gonna, it's gonna be a waste.
The sheer volume alone is just like so cost prohibitive, but, but I mean, you spend a lot of time on us too. So, I mean, Sam allowed everyone on council pretty much, so obviously it's certain now, but I think what we're doing right now is the best thing. We've made already, I mean, feds are obviously aware of it down the coast.
We, we've spoken to coastal engineering, the D E P, on a half a dozen times already about our problem. They were out here. I think I gave everybody, jotted it, emailed everyone. The D E P was out here. They were surveying. I don't know what that means. Taking pictures, I, you know.
The next funding round for punishment until next year and the.
It was absolutely, you know, we, we, we're not alone. And that, that's our problem.
But they know about us for sure.
They know about us, but.
We've spoken with Pirate's Office.
I mean, there are places like North Wild, but they're just one. And so we, I don't think we're gonna be number one on the list, but we just gotta keep talking, so we're at least up to the top of the list somewhere.
Yeah, but I think we'll make it the best decision.
I agree with you.
Anybody have questions?
Okay, Brian, I, I had a few more for the beach, though. I just had a few requests I wanted to add in. I saw a grant money in there that I wanted to purchase new trash cans for the beach. I just wanted to see if we could go ahead and do that.
Yeah, Mike Bascom raised that during our meeting, identified it was grant money available for.
Well, we have the, the recycling tonnage grant, the clean communities grant that you can use for that purpose.
Yeah.
Sam just shows, if you have any other design, we typically use just the blue barrels now, right?
Yeah, so one's on the east side, yes. The one's out in the parking lot. I know I have a couple samples from, we'll send them out.
So Sam, if you have something you want us to look at, please send it to me and Dave and Rob.
Okay, I'll get that sent over. And then I also was gonna ask about the possibility of a beach utility, making some maintenance workers that we can dedicate, managed by non, like to work hourly, just to accomplish some of the beach items, such as the trash cans or, or just maintenance items. If D E P, or D P W's a little bit understaffed right now, maybe we could form a, a utility to help out with the beach items.
I mean, Don could, you know, he, he has his, his budget. If he could fit that in the budget, I don't see why not, you know, as long as they coordinate with each other, I don't see a problem with that. To do what? Pick up the trash, Sam?
Yeah, pick up trash. If we're gonna have to do trash cans, have the trash can that out.
I think it's a pretty good idea if, as long as they, again, they coordinate with D P W and, and make sure there's, you know, they're not equipped with each other. I think that's a great idea. And Don has the budget, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, if it's in the budget, I, I would not have a problem with that.
Guys, I also want, I also wanna add some more sandy erosion fence that we had a bunch of it in the last budget meeting, so I was gonna ask for purchases of the sand, the movie, sand fence and looking back. And I was thinking the beach utility, guys, we just keep working on that. That way they don't overwhelm public works with just more sandy erosion fence that needs to be cleared.
Yeah. No problem.
Going back to the very chance, are we just talking about beach herb chants or are we also talking about street cans?
It was just, it was just beach chatter, but if you talk about the other, I would.
Well, I, I think it's important to look at the sidewalk scape and to see where, you know, what sort of cans need to be replaced. I think you guys sprayed with paint member here. Do any of them need to be replaced this year? And when is this sprayed and painting gonna happen? Cause it, it looks like we probably need them.
Yeah, whatever. Thanks, Dave.
Well, Heather, right now we're doing a little planners. Let's see how those go out, because the, the guy came in with such a reasonable grace that doesn't even pay for us. We could ask him to give us a price on the trash cans.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of a quick time, right?
Yep.
It's starting with the spring and we're gonna get the traffic and it's just nice to look.
I'll have, we'll look in, I'll make sure we ask him.
Joe, as long as, since I bought that opportunity in my mind, do we still do the, the pressure washing of the sidewalk?
We do.
We do, okay.
We're gonna, it, it was halted last time because there was a, a miscommunication problem, but it'll be completed for spring.
Great, thanks.
Alright.
Next, number seven, we go back to number four, E bike ordinance. I think we've all agreed on the plan forward, but there was some.
Well, I, I don't know if we all agree on the plan forward. We, I think we have the crux of it together.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can walk through that better. Okay, gentlemen, any.
No, I don't have an idea. I think we're just unclear on this flat back.
Yeah, so first of all, let's see, my ordinance has been along with the county journey, right? But the main objective when we started this was to put an ordinance in place to give the police the authority to make sure people use e-bikes appropriately in town. The problem's getting worse. We're getting more from them. We had nothing on the books to give the police the authority to do that, so we started that process. We're probably on about division four or five now, where we sit and thank you to gentlemen, you, revision and others who work with us, is the police are reviewing and completing the version that they would like to see go forward. It was built on the town's inputs, so it's well found. Legalists on there, if you want to provide their comments back. So the document is basically ready for final review, and in discussions, there were a couple of things that came up that we were not all clear and comfortable on. I'm just gonna talk to them real quick. First thing was we had some terminology that hadn't been cleared up, some acronyms didn't match anything, so we got that cleared up. That was very simple. The second thing was, the way it was originally written, it allowed minors under the age of fourteen to drive the bikes on sidewalks in town, which we did not think was a good idea. So we discussed that, and it's gonna be revised so that nobody is permitted to ride an e-bike on the sidewalk in town. Personally, I think that's a good change because these can be dangerous, they're quiet, and they don't go on sidewalks. So that changed and then implemented in the draft that we're gonna ask you to review. The third thing is, we wanted to ensure that we had appropriate wording that would effectively prohibit the use of golf carts in town. Our problem is, we got a state highway that runs through the middle, but we have side streets everywhere. If you look at the state ordinance and what's happening in other towns, we felt it was not appropriate to have electric carts running around town here in town. So the way it's written right now, built off the state ordinance, is it basically prohibits the use of golf carts in town. You'd say, well, what about Monta Beach? Monta Beach, there's a lot of them. Well, they have a lot more area on the west side of Ocean Avenue for people to drive around that community, pull across Ocean Avenue and into Monta Beach. We don't have that. We don't have that same setup. Effectively, the ordinance is being written the way it's gonna ban use of, of golf carts in town. The last item, which is, there's no good answer to this question, is how we handle electric bikes in the North Beach area. We talked about a series of different alternatives on how to do it. The way it happens right now is people are driving on a splash pad in a very rapid manner, and it represents a threat to people or whatever, is the walk, children, adults that are walking there. So we talked about effectively free alternatives to be considered. One of them, the first one, is really a long-term solution, and we don't think we can get it in place very quickly. That would be ultimately widen the splash pad, which the town has easement rights to do. It would be a concern for the residents, but we already have easement rights if we did it. And hypothetically, if we went with a four-foot widening of the splash pad, you'd more room between stairs coming down. As Joe said earlier, if you had dedicated bike lane, people would be more aware of the fact that it's a dedicated bike. The cost to do that, the engineering support is estimated to be between five and seven hundred thousand dollars. At seven thousand feet from the bridge, I'm sorry, from the, from the crosswalk down to Shipahoy, that's seven thousand feet. About, you know, it's about a hundred bucks a linear foot for a sidewalk would cost seven hundred thousand dollars. It could be less on a volume job. We said, but hang on a second, this is a state highway. Maybe we need grant money to do this. And we did some research and found, there's a reasonably good probability that if we can get grant money to do this, it would take time. By time, I mean years, not months. But maybe that's a solution. Obviously, if we took that route, there's many homeowners along there that have ownership rights to that property that would object to that. Although we have easement rights and legal authorities to do it, it would be a challenge to get into that kind of direction. But we wanna maintain that as a viable long-term, long-term alternative approach you can look at. But that's not today's solution, but that one's up. The next one we said is, the state is gonna be coming in and repaving Ocean Avenue as part of the bridge project, and it means that they're gonna be repaving. Is there an opportunity to do something with the road itself, meaning for it to reduce the number of bikes on the street? Unfortunately, we can't widen it. We have telephone poles there unless there was an Asian infrastructure change. The road width is gonna stay what the road width is. What we could conceive doing is taking what is a very narrow shoulder, which is probably a foot to a foot and a half wide, drawing a line further out into Ocean Avenue and creating more of a visible bike lane to try to push the traffic onto Ocean Avenue. The problem with that is, the state determines what a car width lane is and what a shoulder width is. And unfortunately, because the road is so narrow, that car truck width lane is gonna push the shoulder to be very narrow. We will, when the time comes, have an appropriate discussion to see if we can widen the shoulder area, AKA bike lane, to make it work to reduce the bicycles to ride it. Because everybody knows in North Beach, if you wanna ride your bike, on that shoulder is virtually impossible. Cars have to slowly go around it. So that would be another alternative, but that's not today's solution because that will all be discussed and happen ahead in the future.
Yeah, no, cause I know Frank, who's just one that reminded me that years ago, the D O T had as a potential option. So it's nothing against them right now, but if that does happen, where they wanna add, their plan was to narrow both lanes, which we said, right, and then add bike lanes, right, to the north and south outside. So that would be the natural solution. Yes, there's still risk and everything, but, you know, if they do that, then that would probably get rid of the need to have a wider splash pad, but that is a, you know, if, if we can get some guidance from the D O T, we would. Would I remember if Greg or Frank was listening to the D O T and see what their, what they have in plan just right now, but.
Well, Greg, Greg was, at the very least, they're gonna wait till the end of the, the bridge project.
Right.
Uh, before they move.
Well, it's, that's something long term.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying, they're gonna do it anyway, if you get first to know now, so.
Well, they, we, they gave us the plan. We have the plan that they, they wanted, uh, they, they wanted to do. Chris has it in her possession. I don't know who gave it to.
It would be a three foot bike lane, I mean, it's kind of, when Frank and I walked in a few weeks ago, I mean, it's tied right in with me. He wouldn't, vehicle traffic, but you could see how if they did shrink up a foot on each side, they'd still be able to pass through.
It was a four nine inch guy.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I agree with what you're saying there. That's not under our control. It's state control. And we would lobby to have that shoulder widened to effectively become a bike lane, to get people off the splash pad. But that will be determined in discussions on the repaving of the one unit. So what that leaves us with is, right now, either drive per ordinance, the electric bikes on Ocean Avenue or on the splash pad. And in discussions with the police department, their view and their recommendation is, we don't drive on Ocean Avenue. The risk of serious injury, they feel, is higher on Ocean Avenue if somebody getting hit. If we force the bikes off on Ocean Avenue versus putting them on a splash, splash pad. Again, there's no good answer. What they suggested as part of that is we add signage on there, address them, speed, right of way, other things that we can put on there to appropriately mark that. So then the question becomes, well, how do you enforce it? Because unless you can enforce it, it's useless. And the recommendation by the police department is they were trying to enforce it two ways. Number one, when patrol cars are going up and down Ocean Avenue, if they see somebody violating the ordinance, they will get on their loudspeaker, their P A, please slow down, be advised, blah, blah, blah. And hopefully that'll deter some people. The second thing that they proposed doing is particularly during the peak months from the bikes are having the most, is increase the e-bike control, but a patrol by our police officers who have e-bikes, who would try to keep people standing in compliance with the ordinance requirements by patrolling up and down there. Now, they are ready to go up to North Beach to enforce parking requirements, which we're getting, we're cracking down really good on, which is beneficial to the residents. So use that as a way to get up and back, and during that process, when they see people, get the word out there, if you're driving improperly, you're, you're subject to a summons, and use that as a way of trying to control traffic on there. There is no good answer here. The approach of a widened splash pad will take time and a lot of dollars and maybe grant money. The street is up to the state to help us decide, but the recommendations from the police department and the way the ordinance is written right now permits them to go on there, on the splash pad, along with additional signage and patrol enforcement by the police. I'll stop there. We tried to cover all the questions and discussions that happened and we certainly listened to resident concerns, but the ordinance is effectively ready to go. We wanna get it in place for the summer, because traffic is gonna be picking up by e-bikes. And unless there's any questions, that's what we say. Greg, anything you wanna add to that?
No.
to resident concerns, but the ordinance is effectively ready to go. We wanna get it in place for the summer because traffic is gonna be picking up by e-bikes. And unless there's any questions, that's what we say right now. Brett, anything you wanna add to that?
No.
That's perfect.
So patrol, that will be controlling this. With this being like a special, just going in, they don't advise for people out there when they go up and down, do the parking at the North Beach, like they do all summer long, open up that splash pad more apart.
All right. I mean, my thought had been like, this entire discussion is just continually controlled as a job. I mean, it's relatively cheap to do that. And just talking about the things that probably didn't cut exactly the same thought rather than just even do the, do the parking.
Well, we do have a special to that, but have one just dedicated to, you know, that splash pad.
Not very dedicated special, how about a splash pad?
How about, how about the problem? You would enter.
You would enter?
Yeah.
No, it depends on, it's, I read last time, 7:30.
Sorry, sorry.
7:30 or something. You know, it varies. It's, you know, the month, the day, the person to drive the bike. It varies, but I will tell you that between May and September, every time we walk on this splash pad, we are terrified of some biker.
I mean, I, the reason I agree, because you're the one who really raised this as an issue. I know it's a race, but we raised this issue recently and started the community, you know, started. So I, I mean, that's why it was just described to you, selling it as only to resolve the problem, uh, temporarily.
Sure, sure banning e-bikes on the splash pad, because seeing that the borough has the will to do that at this point. You know, I'm willing to try something, but, you know, again, we have so many unenforceable or not enforced ordinance, ordinances in town. And I would hope that this just doesn't, sort of mockery of the council's, you know, good efforts, you know. But...
Let me react to what you said, because I don't disagree with anything you said. A couple things. Number one, we have three types of bikers that come from town, as you know. We have the high-speed bikers on the ten speeds that are professionals, and they all say Ocean Avenue, and they go very fast.
Right.
All right, that's their choice. They are dangerous. It's dangerous for them and for the vehicles, but that's the first thing we have. The second type we have is the ones that drive slower and drive on the splash pad. I like mine. I'm not going too fast. I go on the splash pad because I feel it's safer. They tend to be slower.
Hopefully that matters.
Maybe more people. But they tend to be slower than high-speed bikes. And I'm not saying that electric bikes are not going to be slower on the splash pad. And then you got the electric bikes, there's no doubt about that. Brett and I have talked about, we want a dedicated full-time special out there. And last year, as everybody knows, we expanded the police department, we added an officer, were highly adequate specials to make sure that we pay attention to the things that are most important to the residents of this town. Last year, we had absolutely record violations issued for pro violations. A lot of people don't know the facts, but the number of smoking violations, drinking violations, inappropriate parking violations at one of almost 100%, which is critical to this town because it takes away resident parking, which is very important to us. So in a town like this, it's supposed from 1,000 people to 5,000 people, it's almost impossible to enforce everything. What we wanted to do is make sure the police department is alive, with the council and residents focus on the most important things. And I asked the chief, would you dedicate a full-time special there, around all day, to police this? And the answer was, we will control it, but we actually have bigger concerns and problems than putting someone there full-time. I respect that, because they deal with it every single day. And when there's a fight in town, or bad behavior, or something going on, somebody's gonna get hurt. They pay attention to that stuff. So I think the best thing we can do at this point in time is approve the ordinance, give them the authority to do what they need to do, and see how it goes in year one. If they have patrols, curb things, and it's more patrol, when the residents have been talking to us about it and accomplish the objective, great. If it didn't, we'll move on from there, and we'll figure out the next step. In parallel to that, we're gonna try and figure out a long-term solution working with the state that maybe gets us in a position where we eliminate this problem.
Is that ready for introduction on Tuesday?
I don't see it.
Yeah.
Jim, you would know better than me.
If we agree on the changes, I think we can get some of it written up.
I mean, it is what Earl just said.
Yeah.
It's what Earl just said, that I'm fine with that. Let's just get it on. But same reason that I said the, did the traffic, I'd like looking at that, to get it.
I don't think you're gonna change it.
Yeah, I mean, just polished up a little bit, but I think, you know, well, Rich, you reviewed it, you sent it out to us. Can we get that finalized as far as making the photo?
Rich said his comments have been provided.
Okay.
Yeah. I can forward it again.
All right.
If, I mean, what I think that we don't wanna write by ordinance is, we need to have some discussions with the folks who rent these bikes, and somehow have them teach their renters some manners. They know they rent in Highlands, they rent in Long Branch. Somehow, we can have a discussion. I don't know if that's coming from the chief or the department, but to tell these guys, when they come in our town, when they rent bikes, the people come in our town, to, you know, obey the speed limit, be courteous, give warnings. But there's some responsibility on these guys, right?
No, a little bit. I can agree with you. I don't see why any approval. Some of the people I've seen drive from town are just zipping through, you know, back to backs. It's just, makes me, you know, and I'm a motorcycleist, but I would, you know, make it a clause.
So, a question for the council members. If we go ahead, and Jim, I'll work with you to get this finalized, Richard's inputs for introduction on Tuesday.
Yes.
Unless there's any other objections, the people are not comfortable with the light of the rest of that, the other thing we do is start meeting with that signage. So we will go to order that signage as ready to go for the season.
I think John has already provided Frank with some sample signs that he's comfortable with. You guys haven't seen it, but...
I have a sample right here. I searched around, and there's a few different signs out there. This one, it's not harsh, it's kind of very disappointing, but I think it might work best in the town for now. We could put some other signs in, two out there.
Hey, Captain Eric, so is that post-speed? And what's the message? Is it like speed limit and something else?
It just says caution, slow your wheels, and then yield to pedestrians. So it kind of talks about speed limit, but doesn't put a speed limit to say, but it is kind of tell people to slow it down, be courteous to other pedestrians.
Is there a speed limit in the ordinance?
Jim?
No, we do not have a speed limit in it yet. I think the way it's written is, tell them that the vehicle should be powered, it should be pedal, if that's an option for the e-bikes.
They're stable, dude. Right. So what's, it's become an arbitrary thing? I'm just curious.
So you didn't get radar out there?
No, I understand that. I'm not, I'm not guessing.
What I'm saying was, like, where do you kick the people if they're doing what?
Maybe.
I think it's more reckless type of operation. I mean, it's not a speed violation, so reckless.
I think, I, you smoke in the middle of Ocean Avenue, it's a record.
A record, a way to arm by all the bicycles.
There's no way to tell how fast you're going, and, you know, it's just gonna be e-bikes. If somebody's going to the death on a standard bike, it's a violation too. So, you know, there's a few things that we need to talk about in addition to what's already in the ordinance to make sure it's squared away.
I mean, you guys think you need more time on Tuesday to work it out? Or, no, we always have a special meeting to introduce the ordinance.
No, I think it's good.
Yeah.
If I may, the broad message should be courtesy.
Right, yeah.
That's what, that's what this, you know.
I just wanna make sure there's teeth in it, that you guys have the ability, I mean, what Earl was pointing before, to, if someone is not, that you can stop them and give them a summons. And I almost wonder if, and the reason I ask based on that sign, if it might make sense to put a fine on the side to give it more teeth, rather than just taking it as a casual warning, that there's actually a line based on what that...
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. I don't recall what it says in it. I may, I don't know, I believe there's a penalty provision. I refer to the general penalty, I'm not, I haven't looked at it as well.
I mean, I think if I did more teeth, that it actually, the side actually says on it what penalty is, rather than, because that's more of a caution, slow down, guys, please.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about this for a second, too. And we're not trying to rush this one.
No, no, not either, definitely. We're not trying to rush it, right?
But the concept of putting a speed limit in it, you find problematic because you don't have really a way to measure it, right? But I agree with what I already just said, and that courtesy is a thing. We do have fines identified within ordinance right now for reckless driving. I think, John, if we decided to modify the sign when we open it and print it, put a fine value on it, I agree with what Mark said. People see fines, hours, it matters more to them, it should be a nice cap. So let's take that long discussion, decide if you wanna add something.
We can customize that sign if we want, right?
Yeah.
So they don't, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I think especially in the beginning, as you're trying to change new human behavior, you really need to be overly communicative. So I think, you know, talking about the fine is important, clearly stating if there is a speed limit or not. I understand that's difficult to gauge. I think that was Ira had about communicating to the places where there's a tendency to rent these e-bikes. Like, really over-communicating in the beginning is crucial if you're trying to change behavior.
Right, so, so rush it for Tuesday, figure it out, and then if you need a special meeting just introduced, we'll have a special meeting to introduce. So it's ready, my son, I think that's on.
Okay.
And then another, another piece, not connected to the e-bike ordinance, but we had this discussion last year, I sent stencils through to everyone as well. Coming into downtown, you're technically not supposed to be riding your bike on the sidewalks, right? So there are these huge stencils that exist, say pedestrian zone, like walk your bike. Not trying to get people on the street, we're just trying to get people off the bike to walk the bike through town. We know how that becomes a huge problem, people coming in from other towns. Is that something you wanna consider for the downtown area?
I actually have that idea.
It's, it's these little stencils, you just spray paint them on the beginning, like you'd imagine probably one coming in where Buffalo Road is, you could put another one coming in, maybe where Melon Head is, like that little stretch and just a reminder for people that you shouldn't be...
You still, no matter what, anything you do in Ocean Avenue, you're gonna have to have the D O T's permission, so you're gonna have to check with the D O T, even if you so decide to do that, get their permission.
Couldn't we deep it more on the, well, not sidewalk, but like, our peninsula, Portion rather than our 36th.
You can try, they make an issue because they do try, they do have some.
Highways.
Yeah, they have a good way to regulate a certain distance down the road. Frank might know better than I, but yeah, they do have control over any intersections.
Yeah, Heather provided a prior meeting last year some samples of this. I remember seeing them. And if this is a matter of painting something on the sidewalk at the beginning, maybe when you move over the bridge or like Heather said, peninsula, and we have the authority to...
I don't see any harm in doing that. If the sidewalk, if you put something saying, no bikes, rather than saying, this is where bikes go.
Yeah, but her point, and I understand it, is we want people, if they have a bike, potentially walk it on the sidewalk versus get driving it on Ocean Avenue.
Right, yes.
So let's take a look at that, and if there's a way that we can message that with a stencil like she proposed, we can do that independent e-bike work, so we can do it in parallel.
Yes.
Okay.
Let's grab out them in light, no bikes, you're probably, you must walk your bike at this amount or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, all pedestrian zone or dismount zone, there are two, two styles. We'll send them through again.
That was good. Thanks, Heather. Okay. Any other questions or concerns on the e-bike thing? We'll wrap it up.
Yeah.
And have it for review, not necessarily Tuesday, but as soon as possible. Thank you.
All right, guys, thanks.
Thank you.
I think just, when we're talking to the D O T, we could bring up the subject of moving these storm drains back underneath the sidewalks. There's a different way to do a storm drain. What we have now is a three-by-four foot steel up, and no bikes go around that. And now, taking the cap of them. So what they're talking about is they are widening the bike lane by taking a foot on each side of the highway. We also talk to them at that same time about moving the storm drains back so that they're under the curb, you don't have to play that front.
I mean, we could bring it up some. There are bicycles, safety grates, right?
Yeah.
Do we have most of them?
Well, any, any that do stuff is, maybe somebody old, yeah, but that's, that's there.
Point out that...
I don't think so.
There's or not?
I don't think so.
I don't have...
Any idea?
I don't know if they're the standard or safety for bicycles and grates and stuff like that.
They do, uh...
And cyclists, I would go around them, because I don't wanna ride in the center and make my entire stuff in the center. Okay, so.
They do that.
Yeah, I'm sure there are, like a hole or something like that.
Yeah.
We, we don't, we can bring it up to them and put it on them and see what they come up to when the repaving takes place.
Yeah, the reality is, when we talk to them about potentially widening the shoulder for a bike on there, we can talk about that because people almost have no choice but be close to the curb. And if you're close to the curb and you're on a bicycle, and it's a standard drain, you're gonna fall when you go through that sanders. So we can cover that for me, though. Hey, Joe, on an unrelated effort, a year and a half ago, we had meetings with the D O T on these pedestrian crosses. And we had two on the expedited list, but they were gonna do it, and there were five or so other ones that they were gonna do on the long-term list, which would take years. And then they agreed to pay for all of them. The expedited ones was supposed to be done last year. These are good, because these are pedestrian flesh and things. If you press the lights up, what's the status of those?
Haven't, haven't heard from them since they told us that we're gonna expedite it.
Can we check with them?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Uh, next, we'll be straight forward. This is a ball pickup ordinance. We, we, we read it, it was only before, and I remember like the max five items, so like furniture items, that doesn't impact like metals and some.
Right, right. We were, John hasn't been here for, when we discussed it last time, and he, as, as a courtesy, he was the one that brought it up, but we may wanna move and change our ordinance to limit it to five bulk items, because there is no limit right now. I'll call John and see, or text him and see if he has any problems with that, but...
Put it to flight.
Yeah. So, you know, that's an easy one. It's just under our bulk ordinance.
I think reasonable. Yeah, I think five is reasonable, and from everything John said, I think he's fine with it. So, you can check with him.
No, no, that's what I mean. It's rather simple to just put in, you know, we have a bulk day, just put maximum of five. You know how to work that now. Buy it to you.
Sounds good.
The next one is engineering proposal for the submission of the, what was formerly the LEAP grant for the revised study. I haven't heard from Atlantic Highlands. Highlands is with us on the grant. And I got a proposal from Avakin to do the grant application. But when we spoke to Porzio, their, their administrative assistant, Jennifer, is supposedly, supposedly does that for other municipalities, and I wanted to ask her or Porzio how much it would be. But we, we wanna submit it. We're, we're ready to go. Porzio has told you, I think, that they hope within the next week or two, we're gonna have it, mid-March. And then they will come here to discuss it with us and give us an update on the status.
To have it is the update to the feasibility study?
Should be in the next week or two. They said mid-March.
Yeah.
We're, we're in March.
Right.
So, but, but I would bring them to the next either council meeting or workshop.
Yeah, once we're done, they'll come in.
Because, you know, we're kind of, I mean, I think we all know what has to happen, but I guess we're not sure about Atlantic Highlands.
Yeah, we'll talk to executive about it some more.
Okay. That's all I have, man.
All right, sounds good. Oh, I guess the, let's see, I think the last seasonal gent for a bid is...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, right, basically you have, your bids in, they're, they're costly, but necessary.
They are costly. But as you can imagine, we won 10-hour days, seven, seven days a week at the Pavilion and at Anchorage. And we need, we need them there. Within an hour, they're a mess again.
Does that mean one person covers both?
Uh, we're, we're hoping two people, a male and a female.
Yeah, we have that, a male. So when you describe 10 hours a day, seven days a week during the season of operation, what?
May 15th to September.
Two people.
Yeah.
$70,000.
Yeah. That's the cost for the two of them for this. And then that goes from Memorial Labor Day?
Yes, well, 15...
May the 15th to September.
15th to September.
Not a, not a menial job, menial job.
And then what do we do in the off-season?
We do it.
We do.
We do it ourselves.
Yeah, it's manageable. We don't need to...
Yeah, volume is down.
No, but...
I don't wanna get that, but it would be...
It's fine, it addresses the sport issue.
We do these.
Female attendance.
I got it.
Actually, our cleaning service does these in the libraries.
Okay.
Uh, not this cleaning, not the one I'm speaking of. This was a standalone, this is, the ones outside here, Anchorage are, are different.
Gotcha.
And they're going to do, they're going to do the old, this whole building.
Yes. That's true, Lloyd's cars are here.
So this will cover this building.
Bathrooms.
Bathrooms for the summer.
And for the old, this.
Got it, good.
Is this, do this campaign for that, the beach funds?
It does.
Oh.
Um, Joe, are these numbers for just one person?
Yes.
And then it's only double.
Correct, yeah.
And that's eighty, seventy K. And I did see you had bids, so what do you, what would you do? If we approved going ahead with this, you would interview them and decide to make a recommendation?
Yes, we would make, we made more, uh, the public works already made.
Made a recommendation.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Which one?
Uh, sure, number three.
Okay.
Uh, sure, cleaning crew.
A C B is who we're experiencing that has it.
Yeah, A C B, uh, I'm sorry, it is four dollars lower per hour, but they were the ones that we had to terminate last year.
Hey Dave, so the recommendation, can you give us a fifteen-second reason for why you chose them?
What they were the next chief is.
Next chief, yeah.
And we, we didn't want A B C because of that, it's very, yeah, it was bad, so.
Which one are they going with?
Sure, cleaning crew.
Where they, okay.
That's a name.
Turn up.
Is it in here? It's not.
The problem had last year, you had one guy here, seven days a week, ten hours a day, it was like a pack out. This, these people will be able to rotate people around. Know what I mean, it just makes a lot more sense.
I mean, Joe, to me, this, this sounds like the result of success, right? It is in our town. It's, it's a good problem to have, it's an expensive thing to resolve, but if the recommendation is to go with this reputable company and they're at a competitive rate, I, and it's going to be paid for a beach fund, I mean, I don't see why we'd do it.
And the manager was here, we took him around to see everything, so he kind of had his interview.
What do, what do you need, Joe?
Nothing, we'll get a resolution awarding the bid.
Anybody have any concerns?
Nothing. I just wanted you guys to be aware of it.
How is the stamp going out? Yeah, I have one question, just to confirm, they're going to do Anchorage and Lake Beach?
Yes.
And um, it's capped at seventy?
It'll over a hall.
And the overall hall?
Yes.
And um, it's capped at seventy?
No, it's, it's per hour, that's what the full person.
Yeah, seventy-six and change, if they send two people, ten hours a day from May fifteenth to September fifteenth. Uh, that's what came out to be.
If they, if they had four employees, like on a busy day, then would they have potentially to go over the seventy thousand?
If they had four, absolutely.
Yeah, if they, if they have the same ten-hour windows, you need to appear the whole day, I would think so.
Right, so if they had four, then what, couldn't they, um, if they needed that much manpower, couldn't they get up to like a hundred and forty thousand?
No, the agreement I have with the managers, two people, male and female, that they're going to provide.
Yeah, well, I stand, why, why do you think they might have four people?
I don't know if two people can handle all, all, all of that.
Well, they'll be rotating all day between the bathrooms.
Yeah, they don't spend all day at one spot, so they'll come in, they'll clean this place first, go down to Anchorage, go back, and then they kind of just rotate around, and then they take care of.
We have one person for it, right, and that's the right problem, was one person?
Yeah.
That was part of the problem, and it was, and you didn't.
It's a general problem.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, Sam, well, we'll keep, we'll definitely keep an eye on it, we don't want to have like a hundred and forty thousand dollar surprise.
No, Brian, the reason why I said four is like, you don't want people working seven days a week, they're going to rotate.
Sure.
They're only going to have.
So two at one time?
Yeah.
That's, that's.
There's also going to be days where they're not needed. I mean, if we get a couple of days of straight rain, and we have zero traffic, there's no point in having somebody here just to collect the paycheck.
Sure.
So, I mean, if based on hourly, that is with having them here every single day, seven days a week, from May fifteenth to September fifteenth.
And you know we're going to get some.
No way.
Yeah, we're not going to get rid of this year.
Can't afford any of this, yeah. Correct.
Is there, I mean, not to go up in the people, but is there an opportunity, should there be crazy demand where on select days, you have three people? Or do we have options?
Yes, if, you know, Fourth of July, I don't even know when it hits this year, but if there's a day where we think it's going to be super crazy, we could request an additional person, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about the capacity, we've used up people, right? Previously, we had one person doing all of this plus another building, and now we're going to have two people doing less than the previous one was doing, and a male and a female, so it sounds like there should be enough bandwidth, but there's an opportunity to expand if needed.
Yes, sir.
I think the holiday, they're written into the contract, so they're going to be here for that, so.
I agree. That's good.
Thanks.
Um, yeah, so there are a couple of resolutions you can go again. So there, um, on resolution five, the, the transfer, this is for the old Rory's.
Yep.
Um, the way, the way that this site plan is done, and I'm very clear to where, is the they're, they're wanting to expand into the, to the Yoke space, okay? There is no access from the Rory space into the Yoke space, other than for internal personnel to that. So I think we should add, and Brett, and I don't know whoever handles A D, who handles the alcohol?
Sean here handles A B C, and I think he's already aware of the problem that came in top of that already.
Okay, yeah, because the only thing I'm suggesting is that we add a condition on here, even though it'd be illegal to bring the beer outside and walk through.
Yeah, that doesn't sound like the, the plan is to bring it.
It, it, it isn't, but I think we should clarify, it definitely is not, because they want to keep it uh, like two separate types of atmosphere for the institute, but nevertheless, there's always temptation. So I would suggest that we add a condition to this, making it very clear that, that they're not, that the liquor license is not extended to them bringing alcohol from out, from within the Rory space outside into the Yoke space. Because you never know what's going to happen, even though that might be illegal anyway, because you can't, but it doesn't hurt to emphasize when they did the liquor license.
We can do that, or, or are there's going to be access to the center, uh?
No, or Yokes, Yokes has no, the Yoke space has no access to the Rory space.
Well, I know.
Or the court.
I, I know it doesn't, but they don't contemplate that?
They don't, they, they, what, what they, there's not even a door.
Move ahead.
Me, 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 you should have the fourth side. Yeah, of course, but they'd have to come back in for site plan review again. So I think if, if anyone was tempted to like really unify the two, or I can just see people, or if the atmosphere of what they planned for Yokes is successful, if I turn it into more of a bar, I could see people trying to bring the beer, walk across to the Yoke space outside, so it's just higher priority as a condition than the liquor license.
We can do that, I, but I, I think eventually if they're, they're having that, they probably would put a door in.
They probably will, they'll have to return to the planning board again, because it's explicit that they're not doing that.
Okay.
Well, I'm just so real to say, there is an interesting point, does that mean there's no alcohol from the, from the Yoke side of their association?
No, no, that's exactly what this is, they're, they're expanding, they're expanding, yes. Yeah, so trying to expand the one liquor license to both.
It's operating, I guess, as two different.
They are connecting them in the back, so like the kitchen space is connected, but there's no, but there's no customer access uh, to, to both associations.
So, just, I don't know, do you think like that, but.
Reduce.
You don't want them to be out in sidewalk?
Correct.
Right, I don't want people to like, if Yokes, if the Yoke space does not end up being what they currently envision, they decide to turn it into more just a bar. Okay, there's going to be temptation to come from Rory's, hey, let's go to the Yoke side.
Because people do go from like ocean house, not like those.
I understand.
Outside and drink, so the sidewalk.
You're not.
You should get a sidewalk permit.
Okay, but, but we don't, right, we don't want to allow that.
No, they, they want to change that, that can't, that one, that can't be their plan to bring everything out to sidewalk and back and forth. If someone is having a drink, getting jealous, or, you know, it's a violation, that can't be the plan, it doesn't work that way. And if it is open alcohol, if someone has a martini water, it doesn't work that way. Yes, people do do it at accident park, but that's not the plan.
Right, so, so we should just add it as a condition in here, just to safeguard us and then be done with it.